...Commission Meeting Minutes.
Madam Mayor, I found no additions or deletions in the minutes. I move we make a motion to approve.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the minutes from the regular meeting April 12th, 2016. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Deliberate an Act on Lodger's Tax Recommendation. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, the Lodger's Tax Board had met recently. Neither myself or the City Clerk, Ms. Garcia, were in attendance at the meeting, but we can try to provide you information on that. A number of items, presentations were made to the Lodger's Tax Board. You have a summary of their recommendations in the packet. Those come to you from the Lodger's Tax Board for your action and approval. I think, Tricia, maybe you could address the Lodger's Tax Budget, but I would say in general, the Lodger's Tax Budget has been fairly strong. We've been probably a little bit above projected revenues on it, so that's kind of one bright spot in the financial report. We seem to be doing pretty well there on that. But we will attempt to answer any questions that we can in regard to the recommendations.
I only have one recommendation. Is there more than one?
Well, I know that a number of presentations were made to the Board. Are we only taking action on the Little League?
The only ones that are required to come through the Commission are those that they approved out of the Contingency Fund, and this was the only one.
Okay, all right.
The others, they did approve out of other funds.
Okay. We have a request for $5,000 to help with expenses for the Little League District Tournament. It would be for tournament programs, T-shirts, supplies, and welcome bags. And this event has been held before here, and it does bring a lot of visitors to town, families, and participants.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of $5,000 from the Contingency Fund to host the 2016 Little League District Tournament.
I'll second.
Of a motion and a second to approve the request from the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board for $5,000 to Raton Little League for the district Little League Tournament. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Next item of business is deliberate an act on Resolution 2016-21: Approval of the Third Quarter Financials. Michael Ann?
Mayor and Commission, in your packet this evening is the Third Quarter Financial Report. That is for everything through March 31st. I did put a revised one there at your desk. The first page, which is the reconciled balances, nothing changed there, but when I changed the expenses, which are in yellow under the General Fund, it should have changed Page 2 and Page 4, and so it was off like $19.99. So I've corrected that so that your Page 2 and 4 matches with the first page. So that was the only correction, but I didn't want there to be any confusion, and I apologize for that. Looking at our General Fund summary, you'll see that as of March 31st, our ending cash balance was a little over $1 million, $1,168,16058, and then less our 1/12 reserve and a small balance in Street Improvement GRT, your available cash was $754,312. The grocery receipts check that was received in April was showing a decrease of about 3.3 percent, which equates to about $76,000. We are optimistic that the GRT will start to rebound. This would reflect February business activity, which is still kind of a slow time of the year. Next month's check, I would suspect that March, especially with spring break activity, the Easter weekend, we'll see all of those receipts in next month's check. So I'm sure the closing of I-25 probably helped a little bit for receipts that weekend, so we are somewhat optimistic. So I'm hoping the month of May, we'll have a truer picture of where we're going to end up closing out the end of the fiscal year with grocery receipts. We did mention at the last meeting, and I've made a note here, that the small cities assistance was received in March. Unfortunately, it was $90,000 less than what we budgeted. So this has been a very volatile year with the state experiencing a huge decline in oil and gas, and so I think it was to be expected, but this time last year when we were doing the budget, I mean, we couldn't have anticipated that, considering that the prior year, we had such a large check. So as we talk about our budget for next year, that's going to be one of the items that we're going to look at to try and forecast, and it really is just a guess. But obviously, it is a large chunk of money that can have a huge impact on whether or not we can meet our budget commitments. Also, you know, as a result of these shortfalls that we're seeing right now, we will continue to closely monitor all departmental expenditures. We'll have another Department Head meeting next week, and we'll kind of be going over some of this with them to kind of see what they have left in their various line items, and if there are any expenses that can be delayed until next fiscal year, those are some of the discussions that we'll have with them. So, you know, keep in mind, some of these expenses are just reoccurring monthly expenses, so unless there's some capital outlay items still in the budget that we haven't expended, you know, we may or may not be able to make some cuts. But like I said, we are optimistic, hopefully by next month, that we will see a rebound in GRT. The state report that I give you every month for kind of the GRT going back three years, you'll see I added a section there that actually is a comparison with Raton Waterworks. So their tax didn't change last year, it's still 1 percent, whereas ours changed January of last year. So it's really not an accurate comparison. Looking at last year, you'll see our increase this year is 6 percent, but that's because of the quarter percent GRT that we put into effect last January. But if you look at Waterworks' GRT compared to last year, they're just showing a modest increase of about 1 percent. And I think we've talked about this before, that's probably a little bit more accurate comparison when we're looking year to year. So that's the grocery receipts. And then this report that I provide for you is just our reconciled balances for all funds for the fiscal year. Just so you know, we made a transfer today in the Fund 305. A couple months ago, the Commission did approve a budgeted transfer from the Street Improvement Fund in the Special Revenue to the DOT Projects Fund, and that was to offset the remaining expenses that we had for First Street. So you approved the budget adjustment, I just hadn't moved the money. So we actually did that yesterday, and we can clear that up. Other than that, we're just still, you know, waiting on some grant reimbursements. Senior Center, I've got the final grant reimbursement as in on the roof project, so that project is complete. As Neil said, we are going to be probably starting the conference room library project next. Those bids did come in today. So actually, in visiting with the city manager, we were possibly going to suggest a special meeting on May 3rd, next Tuesday at 6:00 PM, to award the bid. These funds do have to be spent before June 30th, so we're on a very tight timeline, and I'm told that it could take two to three weeks to get the permit. So we were kind of hoping to not wait till May 10th, but then we also are still working on the draft budget, and we'd like to maybe have a budget workshop along with that meeting on May 3rd. So something for the Commission to think about.
And I would interject there, if there's no objections from the Commission or conflicts, we'll go ahead and schedule that meeting for next Tuesday, 6:00 PM.
I will be at ICIP training in Santa Fe, but I may be back by 6:00.
Well, and I'll have the budget ready for you on Friday, so you will have the weekend to review the draft. And then if you're not able to be at the meeting, you could give us any feedback or...
Sure.
You know, and it will just be a draft, so I mean, it is a work in progress until we turn, approve it at the second meeting in May.
I would suggest 6 o'clock, and we can do it whenever it works for you all, but I would suggest regular times, 6 o'clock.
Next Tuesday, right?
Next Tuesday, May 3rd, I believe.
So next Tuesday, I'll be on a plane returning from this trip.
Okay, so, but the rest, the three of us will be here. And maybe Neil.
Be close.
Okay. So we'll do that.
I approve the May 3rd meeting. You know, I mean, if, whatever works best for the Commission, if we want to go Wednesday or later in the week.
I mean, it could be the 4th, the 5th, whichever. Does have to be Tuesday.
Because then Thursday, I'm going to a wedding out of town, Thursday, Friday, so Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I might be back.
Is Wednesday better for Lindy, or is she still not?
Lindy, would Wednesday be better for you?
Wednesday would work for me.
Okay.
Do we want to do Wednesday?
The 4th?
The 4th?
May the 4th.
Do we have something else?
Do you all have an event?
Yes.
At the Shooter on the 4th, so just to let you know.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, no.
One of the large events.
Yeah, no, I don't think that's, that's not going to work either.
That's right. Just, I would suggest just keep it Tuesday, the 3rd, and if we can make it, we can make it.
Why did I write the 6th?
May 3rd, Lindy.
Okay.
I don't think the budget of the public hearing can compete with the Eagles.
No.
6 o'clock.
Yeah, I'll be driving back from the airport, so.
I'll race you, I'm coming from Santa Fe.
Okay.
All right.
You can all catch me up on it later.
So as you heard from Dan earlier, usually we have some budget highlights for you. I could say in all the years I've been doing this, we don't really have too many highlights as far as positive highlights, but, you know, we do have a very tight budget, same as Waterworks. The fact that we're not going to get a residual payment and the decrease in the small cities assistance, I mean, does impact us. So those are some of the things the city manager and are working on so that we have some pretty good projections as far as projects and things that we do anticipate in the next fiscal year, but then also the loss of our liability dividend credit is another shortfall that we've got. So we kind of have a few holes that we're trying to fill, and we are going to probably project a 10 percent increase in health insurance, but that's still just a guess. So if it comes in less, great, but we feel comfortable with 10 percent for this interim budget. City Manager is still wrapping up some union negotiations, so hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have some more certain information with regards to those contracts. So that's kind of where we're at with the budget.
And we'll get into this at the meeting, and we'll get to the budget, the draft as the Treasurer stated at the end of the week. But our issue has been, in the last two months, shortfalls in projected revenues. And typically, we would worry about the grocery receipts tax, like we talked about. We're a little behind right now, but we actually have a little optimism for that. It's other things that have showed up. It's franchise fees and residual transfers. That way, of course, the dividend credit on our liability and small cities assistance was a very large hit. So we've got some decisions to make. In looking at the expenses, we've tried to manage those expenses and hold them, live within our means, and I think that departments have done a pretty good job of that, but we're going to have to look at that for next year and make a few decisions. So as Michael Ann had said, the wild cards, when we're putting together a budget, probably on the revenues, would be what happens with small cities next year. That's something that no one here can really predict. We know that utility sales have decreased, and so those franchise fees or transfers, franchise fees are going to be decreased and transfers are just not going to happen. And there's, what health insurance does, we don't know that at this point as well. So we'll recommend the 10 percent budgeted increase. Hopefully, we'll do better than that, but there's no guarantee that it would be limited to 10 percent. And luckily, that's a benefit that we can offer our employees, but it's getting more expensive every year.
Okay. I need a motion and a second on...
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2016-21: Approve the Third Quarter Financials.
Thank you.
Second.
Of a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2016-21: Third Quarter Financials. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Our next item of business is to deliberate an act on Resolution 2016-22: Budget Adjustment Number 9, Fiscal Year 16.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is Budget Adjustment Number 9. You'll see in the General Fund expenses, we're just simply moving money around in the various line items, so the net effect is zero. Under the transfers in and out, if you look at that middle column, the 135,316, the number just below that should also be 135,316. But that does not change the increase or decrease, so I will fix that typo before we have the mayor sign this. So what we're requesting with the temporary transfers is we have received our second pay request or pay app from Anisa Construction on the multimodal. So I've already received reimbursement for the $42,390 that we approved at a previous meeting, so I'd be requesting an additional $92,926 to cover their pay app number two. I have already submitted the reimbursement request to Federal Highways, but it could still be possibly three weeks out. So if you would approve the temporary transfers, then we could release Anisa's check and hopefully get the monies from Federal Highways in a couple weeks. They've been fairly quick in their turnaround. I think the last one, the turnaround was about 15 days. But I am told by the city manager that this project has a pretty accelerated completion schedule, so we would probably see it completed before June 30. And then all of the monies could be transferred back to the General Fund before the end of the fiscal year.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2016-22: Budget Adjustment Number 9 for Fiscal Year 16.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2016-22: Budget Adjustment Number 9. Did you have anything else you'd like to?
No, unless there's any questions.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
One more.
Deliberate an Act on C-C-J-J-A-C-B Grant Number 16-18434, Fiscal Year 16 Budget Adjustment.
Mayor and Commission, as we near the end of the fiscal year, the Juvenile Justice Program has reviewed their budget balances with CYFD, and so we have May and June left to complete the programs. They have lost one of their individuals that provides services for the Boys Council, and so they're not going to try to fill that position at this time, so they're actually going to be shifting most of the efforts to the Girls Circle, which is the majority of the budget adjustment. So the main goal is to expend the full amount of the grant, because you certainly don't want to revert funds, because then next year, they'll think that you don't need the monies. So that's our ultimate goal with this budget adjustment, is so that we can spend the funds before the end of the fiscal year.
Does anyone have any questions for Michael Ann?
I'll move to accept C-C-J-J-A-C-B Grant Number 16-18434, Point 16 Budget Adjustment.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve budget adjustment for Grant 16-18434, Fiscal Year 16, for Children, Youth, and Families Department. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deliberate an Act on Mutual Law Enforcement Agreement between Colfax County and the City of Raton. Does the Chief want to take this, or do you?
Yeah, Mayor and Commission, I think it's fairly self-explanatory, but Chief, if you could come forward and if the Commission has any questions on how this is implemented, how it works, where we're at with the county, on that, Chief would try to answer those questions.
Any questions?
My question would be, how many Commissioned Officers would be?
We have 12 right now, so all 12. Yes, sir.
Can we handle that with, we have such a small workforce to begin with?
Correct. With this administration in the county now, they are more apt to come into town to assist us when we need assistance, so this allows my officers to be deputized or cross-commissioned. That way, if the county is needing assistance near our borders or boundaries, not too far out, of course, but my officers can respond to assist, manpower providing, make sure, you know, that the town is still safe and covered.
Okay, so you feel we're going to get more benefits than...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because we're paying for everything.
Right.
That's why I'm...
I think one thing I would point out is that in regard to police and fire, it's extremely important that we have a good relationship with Colfax County, and we do have these type of agreements and MOUs in place to share our resources. It's going to benefit both parties from time to time, but with the trend that we're tight on budgets and not able to, you know, expand as far as personnel, it's important that we can rely on each other, and I think we've got a great relationship really with those departments currently, and it's important that we maintain that.
It was my understanding at one time that this possibly caused a problem with liability. Who's liable?
Correct. We'll be operating under the county's umbrella, so to speak, if we are in the county, so from my understanding, their insurance should cover our officers. I haven't read in depth into the agreement, but that's how I believe that operates, ma'am.
Okay, you agree with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the liability falls on whoever you're, whoever you're working for?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We'll make the motion to approve Mutual Law Enforcement Agreement between Colfax County and the City of Raton.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement between Colfax County and the City of Raton for mutual law enforcement. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Steve Garcia. Deliberate an Act on Consideration of Easement for Encroachment of Garage on La Cueva Street Residential Usage Located on Lodge 21, 22, 23, 24, Block 6 of Willow Springs Edition, 933 North 3rd Street. Grant to Pat and Carol Marcus. City Manager?
Mayor and Commission, the party requesting the easement, Pat and Carol Marcus, has come forward, they look at acquiring the property from a financial institution, and in the course of that transaction, a improvement location report was prepared. It's not a property survey, but it is done by a surveyor, and the surveyor identified that a possible encroachment, as you see on the map that's attached, an existing garage of 2.6 feet. Just looking at it, it doesn't look to me as if it's really encroaching, but that's the information that we have. In order for that to go forward, and we do hope to see someone occupy a house that's vacant right now, what I'm told by Title Services is that that can happen if the city would grant an easement for that. And I would recognize the distinction between vacating part of our right-of-way and granting an easement. So I think the easement will work, is what they tell me. We brought it to the Commission for your consideration. I would recommend in favor of granting the easement. There may or may not be an encroachment, it's not a property survey, but this will satisfy the requirements. This does not interfere with utilities, it does not interfere with drainage, our use of the right-of-way, or traffic. And I would recommend in favor of the grant of easements.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we approve the easement for encroachment of the garage on La Cueva Street from Mr. and Mrs. Maris.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the easement for encroachment of garage on La Cueva Street. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Deliberate an Act on Engineering Analytics Cost Proposal for Tiger Drive Project.
Mayor and Commission, we have one phase of the Tiger Drive pavement rehabilitation project remaining. That is essentially from the railroad area east to South 2nd Street, and you can see that everything west of there has been rehabilitated, is in great shape, and this remaining portion of it is really unraveling and in very poor shape. You remember, back in the fall, we had volunteers, it was actually the high school football team, to show their support of the community, went out and did some patching on that section. But through the winter, we'd had just enough winter where this section is really coming apart. So the plan is that we would take sealed bids for construction of the work and perform that when school is out. Now, we'll be funding this with funds that were capital outlay granted by the 2015 legislature. So we have 150K. Our estimate would be about $200,000 on the project, and we would recommend to the Commission that we pay for the balance with our gas tax money. I have asked Engineering Analytics for a proposal to provide the professional services, which you have, and I would recommend approval of the authorization here and turn them loose on the engineering work. And Karen Sterns is available to answer any questions that you have. Fairly straightforward project. We've done some curb and gutter replacement in that area. It's mill and overlay of the asphalt surface. Pavement markings are very important in this area because of the rail crossing. And you'll see that we have temporary signage up there now, but this project would involve placing permanent pavement markings.
Are we doing any sidewalks, curb and gutter?
We are not doing any concrete work under this. We have already replaced portions of that, so we think we're in good shape on that. And I think the one thing to talk about is at the intersection of 2nd Street, and there are a number of intersections on 2nd Street where curb and gutter is really coming apart. Now, I would like to talk to the District 4 Engineer of DOT on that, because it's been pointed out to us, we have sidewalk that is heaved. You see where that's heaved up and is not in a safe condition. We have curb and gutter that's just broken up and coming apart. And there is an agreement between DOT and City of Raton, where the City of Raton will provide certain maintenance on 2nd Street, and in my mind, that's not maintenance. Curb and gutter should last more than 10 or 15 years. Curb and gutter should last more than 10 or 15 years. Sidewalk should last more than 10 or 15 years. Those are construction defects, which I would ask them to fund replacement of. And Grand Street intersection, Tiger Drive intersection, there are other areas up and down Second Street, certainly the sidewalk replacement. They may not agree with that assessment and we may be back here talking to the Commission about doing some of that work, but that'd be my suggestion is on that, that we talk to DOT and ask them to do it, or at very least, share costs on that.
On this Tiger Drive project, the right-of-way of the railroad is rough. I drive that every day. Would they be doing something to that or is it up to us or we can't do it or what?
Yeah, well, the railroad right-of-way is a little tough because it's start and stop paving and you're matching that first phase. So there is a seam there, but we really, the plan is just to add pavement markings. It's not to do anything additional on resurfacing in that area. There also is some need for some drainage improvements there, but primarily we're looking at pavement markings there. But, you know, I think, I guess, you know, take your critique of that, but in having the contractor pave that is, you know, you start here and you stop 100 feet away, it's tough to really get that continuity. And the crossing itself, we've had conversations about BNSF, with BNSF, about maybe replacing that rubberized crossing. And that may be an area that we're talking at too. That would be outside of what we're doing here. And of course, that requires a lot of coordination with the railroad and we'll continue that conversation with the railroad.
I'll make a motion to accept approved Engineering Analytics Cost Proposal for Tiger Drive Project.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the cost proposal for Tiger Drive by Engineering Analytics. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
I would like to see Mr. Berry continue with the Department of Transportation on the sidewalk, if you would.
We will make that contact.
Deliverate an Act on Groundwater Monitoring Proposal from Gordon Environmental. Mr. Berry, oh, okay, I'm sorry, Jason. I didn't see you up there.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, we have before you tonight a proposal from Gordon Environmental for the continuing monitoring of three active monitoring wells at the Raton landfill. This proposal is part of the procurement that we've done with Gordon on an RFP. It's the extension of this for one additional year, which is two monitoring events for a fee of $23,500. I would like to recommend that we approve it as it's imperative that we continue to monitor the groundwater. I wouldn't hesitate to say the cost of regulation is excessive in this case and that's something that we're looking at for the next 30 years. On an additional note, the Environment Department has requested that we install an additional monitoring well and make one of these wells inactive during this time period. So we're assuming that when that occurs, it would just transfer to the different monitoring wells. Mr. Berry and I have applied for a solid waste facilities grant to cover the work of installing another monitoring well, which is about $25,000 that we haven't heard the result of. It's fairly expensive. $23,500 includes them sampling and some laboratory fees. They break down the schedule on it. But like I said, at this point, I think it's best to move forward with who we have, at least for another year, continue to monitor these and then look at a long-term answer in the future.
Okay, so this is a year extension?
This is a one-year extension just for this task itself.
Right, and this is not the completion? We have to go another?
I think it's open-ended. We, it's a task order-based contract, so.
No, I mean, a monitoring.
Yes, we have to go a year.
Yeah, as far as monitoring, we're going to do this in the long term. We're going to add one monitoring well. We're going to have a one-time cost of constructing that well, but we're going to monitor a minimum of three wells for the long term on this schedule.
Okay, at one time we talked about having someone within our own staffing do the testing and send it off.
Madam Mayor, long-term, I would recommend that we do something like that in the future. In the environment where we're currently in with litigation and the need for more objective third-party consultants in the area that we're in right now, I don't think that's a model that I would recommend transitioning to at this stage of the game.
Okay, and in another year, if we wanted to, we could put out a proposal?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
What's the depth of this new well? Is it any risk there or is it deeper?
I would estimate it's probably a 20-foot, 25-foot total well.
It's probably a little deeper than that because we are monitoring groundwater below the cells. And so, actually, the groundwater on this site's, you know, fairly deep. It's in excess of probably 50 feet. And we do have that shale formation there too, but it's fairly deep. It's well below, you know, our cells. It's really kind of independent from, you know, leachate that we might have. We haven't seen any impact on groundwater in the time that we've been doing it. It's probably about 15 years of testing. But yeah, I'd say in excess of 50 feet would be my estimate.
That's possible.
Make a motion to approve ground monitoring proposal from Gordon Environmental.
Second. Of a motion and a second to approve the groundwater monitoring proposal from Gordon Environmental. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. Can we just have Jason stay up there and go to number L? Deliverate an Act on the Extension of the Tipping Fees?
Sure.
If it's okay with the Commission?
It's all right with me.
What we have before you is a request to extend landfill tipping fees. We currently are in the second year of a two-year agreement that we've signed with Midway Landfill. It was operated by Waste Management. In March of 2014, we requested pricing for three-year terms for tipping fees. Midway Landfill, it submitted a proposal of $15 per ton in year one, $15.42 in year two, and $15.88 in year three. The contract that was put in that, out in that big package, did allow for four years of contractual services, even though we only requested pricing on three years. We've been working with a gentleman named Mark Anderson from Waste Management out of the Phoenix office, and he's a third-party account manager. And we've informed him that this is, we're nearing the point where we need to either rebid or reach a mutually agreed upon extension of years three and possibly year four. So I had inquired about the possibility of them entering into an agreement at the $15.88 for year three and hoping that they would hold that rate for year four, primarily so that when we bid the trucking and transport side of this contract, it's a two-year contract and we get better pricing when we can guarantee that contract for a little bit more security. Waste Management has indicated that since this March 2014 bid letting, the equivalent of the Environment Department of Colorado has imposed an additional 10 cents per ton on all landfill trash to support their recycling program. That's basically how Colorado funds their recycling grant. And they have agreed to extend years three and years four if they would be able to pass along the 10 cent rate increase, which at the 5,000 tons a year that we generate, it amounts to less than $500. When analyzing it from my perspective, the cost of putting this out to bid is $1,000 in time advertisement and putting the books out. So I think it's still a wash. It gives us two years of rate certainty and so far, this arrangement has worked well for us. I would like to request that we go ahead and extend it for two years. They've indicated that they would with the only change that it would be $15.98 instead of $15.88 per ton.
And this is still well below wagon mount?
Yes, wagon mount bid was, I believe, $26.50 per ton. We had completed a matrix at the time that this was done. It was the cost of the haul plus tipping.
Right.
And anything over, I want to say 16.85 tons per trailer. Midway Landfill was the most advantageous for our dollar. Due to a wonderful job by Ernie, we averaged close to 20 tons per trailer. So it's really not even in the ballpark at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we approve the extension of the tipping fee contract for Waste Management Midway Landfill.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the extension of the tipping cost contract for Waste Management Midway Landfill. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I have the floor. If I could just update you on one thing on a night we've had, not a lot of great news. We did receive word this week that the Solid Waste Bureau of the New Mexico Environment Department would entertain a grant application favorably for the City of Raton to receive $225,000 in grant fees if we are willing to commit to a $25,000 loan for construction of the transfer station. Mr. Berry, from his first day in office, had made multiple trips to visit Ryan Flynn of the New Mexico Environment Department. On our first visit, he basically said, never met anyone from Raton in my life. And Silver City comes to our office every three weeks. So if you get left out, it's because we don't know you.
Because we don't see you.
And through, I think, the efforts of the Commissioners and specifically Mr. Berry, we've formed a relationship at the Cabinet Secretary level. He had made a commitment that if we sought that out, we would benefit from nurturing that relationship. We had preferred to not have additional loan monies, as we've already borrowed $500,000 for the facility, but a 90% loan, 10% grant is, I think, the best we can do in this environment. And it amounts to $1,500 a month for 20 years with no prepayment penalty, something that our rates can sustain pretty easily. So we'll have 3/4 of a million dollars to build a transfer station in the next year. Thanks to Mr. Berry for making that happen because Ernie really wants to build.
Ernie, it's all your fault. Thank you for that information and thank you for your work, Mr. Berry. Our two items of business is to deliver an Act on Conveyance Agreement between BNSF Railroad Company, a Delaware corporation, and the City of Raton. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, we had talked about the conveyance contract. Basically, BNSF Railroad is offering to donate the depot to the City of Raton. Of course, we talked about some of the conditions in the agreement, a number of things for the Commission to consider in this conveyance agreement. And also, there is a lease agreement attached and under the lease agreement, BNSF would continue their operations and their operations are fairly limited in the building. So in regard to both of these, we had thought that we would gain more information before coming back to the Commission. And I would like to update the Commission on what we've done in the meantime. We did have a specialist in regard to asbestos and lead, look at the building, just visually walk through it. And that's not comprehensive, but the report that we got was that it didn't look like there was any contaminated material or remediation or abatement that was necessary for the building. The specialists did recommend that we sample some materials and test for those. And the one possibility I think they pointed out was possibly with window putty, we could find material, but the window putty looked fairly new actually, and we don't believe there's any asbestos in the building. And we believed, and I talked into BNSF staff, that a lot of remediation had taken place before and any asbestos-containing material has previously been removed. So as I say, it's not really a comprehensive inspection. It's not based on any evaluation, but that's a trained eye looking at various materials, gauging the age of those materials. And I think it's, I'm not too worried about finding any asbestos in there later. We just don't think that's really an issue or a problem. We looked at the utilities, specifically, you know, one of the utility costs that we would pay is natural gas. Last year, the cost of natural gas for the building was a little over $2,500. And so there is a gas force air heater system in there. The heater itself is not old. It's placed in there within the last three or four years. Fairly new system, new ductwork, new electrical with that system. About $2,500 is what we look at to operate that system. That would be a cost that we would have here. We obtained some limited electrical cost information. That would actually be a cost that's passed on to RPS rate payers. And that looked like it was about $500 a month for electrical. Now, I'll kind of throw a caveat in that because of some of the equipment that BNSF has placed in there. We'll come back and talk about that. But those are the primary utilities that we're looking at. As you see in the agreement, BNSF will provide for their own phone, internet, and janitorial for what they do. And I can tell you from walking through the building, they haven't done much janitorial.
I was going to say.
I can tell you that, and some of the Commissioners here have walked through the building. BNSF staff has been very helpful in giving us access to the building and walking through it. Some of you have seen that in there. I can tell you that it's really from the outside, an iconic building, probably one of the best depots that I've seen, period. But inside, not very nice.
It's never has been.
Not nice, yeah. So what we saw is it's not clean, it's not prepared in any way. There's, it's split up with partition walls. It's used in a very utilitarian fashion by the railroad now. Walls, ceilings, floors, all, you know, bad, but those are not big cost items if we're looking at renovation projects, really. It's not a large area, so I'm not really afraid of getting into a renovation of the building. We did talk to Federal Highway Administration. Our representative there, Greg Heitman, relayed to me that funds remaining from the multimodal project, which is a grant from FHWA, he thought that FHWA would be agreeable to using those on the depot. And so we've got partial, part of the funding to begin renovation. As we've probably talked about here before, Amtrak is attempting to construct an accessibility improvement project that would primarily involve removal of brick pavers outside and replacement of those with concrete. So that part will be taken care of, not something that we would enter into. But the project's been a long time developing. They actually started construction this week and then stopped construction. So we understand that construction won't resume on that till August because you're getting into the busy time of year. So the project has been put on hold, but that's not a cost that we would be involved What I saw in there is a lot of old electrical system. And so I think that there would be some cost in updating electrical systems. I think the plumbing in there is probably old as well, but it's very limited. There's a set of restrooms in the lobby and then there's a set of restrooms in the office of BNSF, and that's about the only plumbing that's in there. So, you know, not, I don't think that's a real big item. Parking lot is one of the main costs of the project. It's very insidely rough and drainage would be a consideration there. So I would think that part of the funds, we would look at improving that exterior area with. And I don't know if I'm missing anything that we had talked about before. I guess two items that are outstanding. One, I had contacted New Mexico Self Insurers about the cost of. They need some more information, they really need to kind of quantify the value of the building. So I don't have that today, but we're in contact with them, we're working on that. We'll exchange some more information and get at least a ballpark number of what the insurance cost would be. And then the second thing is, people that have been in the lobby, you see that the lobby of the existing depot is really narrowed down with the construction of a partition wall. And we understand, in talking to BNSF staff, that a good part of that lobby was partitioned off to place telecommunications equipment, and that's their communication center, and the question I've got is, is that going to be relocated? Because with it there, the lobby is really compromised, it would be hard to do much with the interior of the building if those walls stay and the telecommunications equipment stays. So I talked to a couple of BNSF officials today, we're kind of working our way up the ladder, and I haven't talked to anybody yet that can say what the fate of that telecommunications equipment is. So that's, I think, a big factor in your decision on this, and I expect to get a call back from the next level, the next step, in the next couple of days, but we don't know how to answer that question right now, today.
I thought I read in here someplace that we were required to put in a geothermal heating system? I don't even read it out now.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. I mean, what it does say is that we would pay the cost of any utilities.
Yeah, no, I know that, and the insurance. And then, can you explain to me their right to take the building back? That was my question last month. Let's see if I can find that, because I was surprised when I read it. Maybe I dreamt it.
It's in there.
Is it in there?
Yes.
Thank you, Ron. Because I wondered.
We questioned that at the last meeting, too.
With the cost.
And what they would do is that if, at some point, they decide they want the building back.
Right, they'll pay us.
They'll pay us for our renovation, but not any of grant money from.
Right, minus the amortization.
As fellow commissioners and, fellow commissioners and city manager Berry, I've indicated to Mr. Berry after we inspected the building down there, and as we went through it, I was against, if they're only going to give us the lobby, then I would be against us even considering this contract. Mr. Berry has indicated that he's talking up the ladder, and if they come back, so what I would like to see us do, once again, I'd like to see us table these two until the May third special meeting at least, and see that if they get back to him, because I would like for them to tell us that they are, that they're going to give us the whole building, you know. When we were down there talking to him, I indicated that if we didn't get at least the five arches that are on that building, that part, and let him have that little part, that I would be against it, because it would be just a small existing lobby that's there now, and it wouldn't benefit the city at all, in my opinion. And we would be, we would be taking on the, all the expenses for it. So if they can, if they can get back to Mr. Berry and indicate that they're willing to let us have that part, then I would like to see it tabled until that March special meeting at least then.
Yeah, because we're paying, I agree with you, we're paying their utilities and the portion of the building that they're using.
Now, let me add that of the five hundred dollar electrical cost, I think a lot of that is the telecommunications equipment.
Oh, it's theirs, yeah.
I didn't see a lot else in there that's really using electricity. Of course, you know, with the forced air system, you've got some fans and all, but I'm not sure what it looks like in there, but they said it's pretty substantial equipment, and I think that's the big power user. So if that was to leave the building, I think that the electrical use would probably be substantially less, but we haven't looked at the telecommunications, that's just what they tell us.
As a side note, I was able to visit the people down in Las Vegas this week, and I spoke with a couple of their people on staff there. They were able to acquire one point five million dollar grant money to, just through the historic building, this restoration. So I, you know, I think that we also could apply for grant money if we were able to do the majority of that building.
Well, I agree with you, I think there's grant money out there. My concern is, they come in and take it back over.
Right, and my concern is, same as Mr. Chavez, right now, there's not enough room in there to wipe your nose barely, so I would want at least the area where the communications are located.
So right now, there's not enough room for a ticketing agent to sell tickets?
I would say, yeah, it would be very cramped.
Okay.
I would like to make that into motion, then, that we tabled this until the May third meeting, at least, until then, and at that point, maybe we'll have some answers.
Okay. And did we have anybody, did Mr. Florsham look at this?
Mr. Florsham has both, both documents. I had a meeting with Mr. Florsham. He has not given me back an opinion on that yet, but I'm going to guess that he would be ready to do that and report to the commission.
Bless you.
Next week, and I could certainly have him attend the meeting as well.
If he would attend the meeting on the third.
Sure.
Yeah, so if we have questions, we can ask him.
Sure.
What does this mean?
Right. I'll pass that along to him, and yes, Mayor, we'll plan on having the attorney present.
I will second Mr. Chavez's motion then to table or postpone until the May third. I have a motion and a second to postpone deliberation on number K and L, no, not K and L, J and K, until the May third meeting, at which time, hopefully, we'll have more information, and our city attorney present. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. City managers report.
Mayor and Commissioner, I did attend the pre-construction conference for the demolition of the Borcela generation equipment by, was held with the engineers and contractor, RTS Shearing, as Commissioner had reported to you earlier, so we won't go into any more detail on that. We did, myself and Jason Phillips did attend a meeting today with the bureau chief of the New Mexico Solid Waste Bureau, and we generally discussed the status of landfill reclamation. Had a lengthy meeting, I think a productive meeting, as far as going ahead. She was in Raton, inspected the landfill, we spent a couple hours with the bureau chief, and generally, what we're talking about with landfill reclamation is, there's a grading plan which dictates how the drainage works, and the concern is that precipitation drains off of it rather than percolates into the landfill, creating leachate. So we would, we took some, we would take steps on the dirt work to reach a grading plan, that means filling in certain areas. We're generally close to the grading plan, but we would import some dirt to do that. Another requirement is that we place an eighteen-inch barrier layer, and the barrier layer is clay soil material that meets a certain permeability requirement, and so we've done some sampling and testing of potential barrier layer soil, and the one that is really acceptable to Solid Waste Bureau is the soil that is found on our ten-acre transfer site. So we would remove something on the order of ten or twelve thousand cubic yards of barrier soil from that site and utilize that, and then we had asked for bids from landowners for topsoil, and the requirement is that we place six inches of topsoil on the entire landfill, it's about twenty-four acres, so that's quite a bit of topsoil, and we anticipate bringing those bids to the commission in the near future, it could be the end of May or the first of June, and we'd like to combine that with a bid from a contractor to then excavate, haul, place, and grade both barrier soil and topsoil. So we went through the various requirements on that, the Environment Department told us that they're ready to approve our plan, and we'll get them some documentation from our side, they'll give us approval, we'll bid these things and bring those bids to the commission. Of course, as you can imagine, we're looking at significant expense for doing this, and it would span, it would occur in this fiscal year and in the next fiscal year. So that's forthcoming. The Northeast Regional Transportation Planning Organization will be in Raton April 27th, I believe that's tomorrow, correct? And that's at 10:00 a.m., and that's held at the Sweet Shop. Then in the afternoon at 1:00, Northeast Economic Development Organization, NITO, New Mexico, will meet from 1:00 to 3:00 at the Sweet Shop. Everybody is welcome to attend both of those. The New Mexico Watershed and Dam Owners Coalition will be held in Angel Fire May 5th and May 6th, the 2016 Conference and Business Meeting. I'm registered to attend that, as well as Dan Campbell, representing the Water Department. We'll report back to you on that conference. The Interstate Stream Commission has conducted a water planning update for all regions in New Mexico, but specifically our region. That involves a lot of work from a regional steering committee. City of Raton was represented by Dan Campbell on that planning effort. There is a draft, or I guess it would be final, water planning update document, so anybody that is interested in viewing that document, either myself or Dan Campbell can provide that, or information on the regional water planning effort. On our construction projects, currently, we have multimodal under construction. As Michael Ann had told you, we intend to complete construction and complete the grant within the fiscal year, at least that portion of the grant that goes to the multimodal. So the contractor is currently generally placing concrete or reinforced concrete. They've completed construction of the north arch structure, two seat benches, the sidewalk that comes from the railroad into the Wells Fargo Building, and they're working on the mow strip currently. So that's progressing along pretty well. We will now get active on the Tiger Drive project and bring a memorandum to the commission in regard to other street projects that we planned during the summer, so I'll put that together and get you information on our proposal as far as street improvements that are coming up. Fairly modest street improvements this year because of where we're at on funding, but we'll let you know what we propose to do and get your input on that. We did open bids on the senior center, Conference and Library Area today, we're going through those, I think we want to meet with the architect, make sure that the work that we authorize is within the available money, it's very close. So I'll meet with Dave Little tomorrow, he's our architect, and at the May third meeting, it's important that we move that along, but we'll have a recommendation for award for the commission for you to consider, but fairly close bids and generally in the available funding. I think lastly, I would report that we did conduct our business expo. Our keynote speaker in town was Pam Atherton, thanks to Raton Main Street, that really did all of the work in putting that together, they conducted a job fair. Pam Atherton addressed businesses, representatives, organizations, the city, and individuals that attended the conference, and she had some very direct comments about all of us evaluating what we're doing to make our businesses successful, including the city, and she pointed out the importance these days of having an effective online presence, and just the fact that when someone is looking for a service that you're marketing, a lot of people today are online, they're looking at those apps that are online, and if you don't have a presence there, you're not effectively marketing. So I think a very professional, eye-opening presentation, and thanks again to Main Street for all your hard work in putting that together. We look at having an annual spring event, and we really look at growing this and being bigger and better every year, but I think it was a very successful business expo. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Is there anything else to come before this body?
I would like to, this weekend, I don't know if anybody's been there, I went to the city hall at Rio Rancho. It's twelve miles east, out in the desert from downtown, and by golly, they have a Subway sandwich shop inside the city hall, so I would like to see if maybe we could get a donut coffee shop.
I see the police out there, and they're nodding yes.
Yeah, I couldn't believe it, they have a Subway shop inside the city hall, but I understand. Nothing further.
They'll give up the commission room?
Only if it's Taco Bell.
It's Taco Bell, huh? Is there any other business? Seeing none? Meeting adjourned.